On February the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Wish all of you a happy Valentine's Day tomorrow. So we're starting here at six P. M. And the first item on the agenda is review of the impact municipalities Missouri Senate Bill Five. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is a carryover item from a couple of weeks ago. Council requested an update on the impact of Missouri Senate Bill Five, which was Senate Bill Five from two thousand and fifteen. Our legislative liaison, John Mayfield, is going to provide that update to the council this evening, and I will turn it over to him.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As Zach said, John Mayfield, Constituent Services Legislative Affairs Officer. I'm going to give you kind of a little bit of a history and kind of where we are. Hopefully, this will be short and sweet and to the point. Senate Bill Five became law in two thousand and fifteen. And before I really begin, we kind of have to acknowledge the tragic incident that kind of was the catalyst for all of this. The tragic death of a young man, Michael Brown, on August ninth, two thousand and fourteen, led to a highly critical report by the United States Department of Justice in March two thousand and fifteen on the practices of the Ferguson, Missouri Police Department and the Ferguson, Missouri Municipal Court. It was pretty scathing, and I'll kind of refer to some examples as I go through what Senate Bill Five eventually did. State lawmakers immediately realized, and I was actually one at the time, and we all realized there's a serious problem in eastern Missouri. So state lawmakers wanted to do something, and when we speak of municipal court reform, it's Senate Bill Five, it's other legislation, it's other court activity, and things that occurred over a several-year period between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and sixteen. But the first piece of legislation passed during this time period was Missouri Senate Bill Five, which we're talking about tonight. It was signed into law by Governor Jay Nixon on July ninth, two thousand and fifteen, and it was an attempt to address the concerns of the Ferguson community. Many municipalities, including independents, agreed that many of these reforms were needed. So what did Senate Bill Five do? It did the following things: Set that there's no possibility for jail on minor traffic violations under R. S. M. O. four seven nine point three five oh. And I know we have an attorney here, so I'm going to be technical just for a moment. I'm not usually technical, but just to cover my bases, a minor traffic violation is a municipal or county traffic ordinance violation prosecuted that does not involve an accident or injury, that does not involve the operation of a commercial motor vehicle, and for which no points are assessed by the Department of Revenue, or the Department of Revenue is authorized to assess one to four points to a person's driving record upon conviction. And I just kind of have to say, too, for several reasons, it is not a policy of the state of independents that normally jail people for minor traffic violations. Number one, it's just not who we are. And secondly, and I think I have several witnesses in the room if I stumble along the way tonight that will back me up, I see a lot of very learned people in the room to my left tonight. But secondly, we're dealing with more felony cases in municipal court than we ever have before. It's kind of flowed down from the circuit court. So if we're going to put somebody in jail, it really needs to be somebody that really society and the court system has said, this person might need to be held and detained for a little bit. The second thing that Senate Bill Five did was it suspended the ability to suspend driver's licenses for failing to appear in municipal court for minor traffic violations. Third, defendants must be given time to pay and be provided with payment plans after guilty pleas or guilty verdicts. One of the instances that the Justice Department referenced in their report on Ferguson, in two thousand and seven, one of their citizens giving a parking ticket, and the fine was one hundred and fifty-one dollars, which I'm not an expert, I'm not a traffic attorney, but in two thousand and seven, one hundred and fifty-one dollars for a traffic, for a parking violation seems a little steep. But this individual was poor and did not have time, you know, had the money to pay. They subsequently missed two court appearances for this parking ticket, were actually jailed twice, and then they added fines and fees for her failing to appear in court. So her one hundred and fifty-one-dollar parking fine over seven years turned into a fine of one thousand and ninety-one dollars. She also had been jailed twice during this seven-year period. She had paid five hundred and fifty dollars, but still owed five hundred and forty-one dollars seven years later. So you can kind of begin to see that there were some serious issues that needed to be addressed, and we agreed with that. Fourth, if a defendant does not pay after being provided with a payment plan, the court must hold a show cause hearing before a warrant for failing to pay a fine can be issued. Fifth, it reduced the maximum fine for traffic violation to three hundred dollars, which was fine and court costs. This was later reduced by subsequent legislation to two hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's fee, fine, and court cost. Sixth, not showing up on the first court date does not result in a warrant, but in a failure to appear, and the court must send a reminder about court to the defendant. Seven, anyone held on a warrant for a minor traffic violation must be arraigned within twenty-four hours. However, if there's other extenuating circumstances, like other traffic violations or other situations, that could be changed. And finally, it required the limit on annual general operating revenue from traffic fines to be reduced from thirty percent to twenty percent for municipalities. As I mentioned, there were abuses in eastern Missouri. In fact, several cities in eastern Missouri were funding their general fund by over fifty percent of the revenue they generate from municipal court. I can tell you that independents has never even been close to the twenty percent level. Most of these municipal court reforms were designed to deal with these abuses that were occurring. However, because lawmakers did not ask for input from judges, prosecutors, and court clerks, a significant problem started to occur. An unintended consequence of Senate Bill Five was that people began to realize they didn't necessarily have to show up for municipal court anymore. An example of this, in between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and eighteen, the number of traffic citations issued by the Independence Police Department decreased by forty-one percent. Over a four-year period, the number of traffic tickets we wrote decreased by forty-one percent. The percentage of cases we had where people failed to appear in municipal court increased by twelve percent in that same period. And it's also a similar story with our general ordinance summonance cases. Those failing to appear, my records indicate, increased by seven percent. We've not really ever had a great track record getting people to show up for that, but when municipal court reform came along, oh, you don't have to show up for a traffic ticket. Well, certainly, you don't have to show up for a barking dog, or your grass is too tall, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Approximately sixty-three percent of citations issued annually for traffic violations in independents are not resolved. Some communities say it's much worse in their communities. The city of Peculiar to our south, in Cass County, said that their failure to appear increased in the same time period from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen by one hundred and eighty-six percent. A good example of this was written about in a Kansas City Star July eighth, two thousand and eighteen editorial entitled, "There's No Punishment For Not Showing Up To Court: How Missouri Defendants Get Off Easy." Unquote. The Independence Municipal Court was the main focus of the editorial. The day the Kansas City Star came to Independence Municipal Court for a show cause hearing, there were three hundred and sixty-eight cases on the docket. Judge Helm saw seven defendants. Three hundred and sixty-eight cases, Judge Helm saw seven defendants. A South Kansas City lawmaker was quoted in the editorial saying, "We're making Ferguson's problems Kansas City's problems." The editorial concludes that, quote, "Missouri needs to revisit its two thousand and fifteen reforms with the goal of restoring some authority to its municipal courts. As of now, they've been effectively defamed." End quote. Our main concern is public safety. The Independence Police Department, I know Chief Dustman is here, and he'll probably correct any misstatements I make, but the Independence Police Department patrols ninety-nine miles of state and federal highways, including long stretches of Interstate seventy, U. S. forty highway, U. S. twenty-four highway, and Missouri Route two ninety-one. According to the Missouri Department of Transportation, independents was third in the state for speeding cases that resulted in serious injuries in two thousand and eighteen. Were fifth in population, but we were third in this category. The Kansas City Star in a March second, two thousand and twenty-two article entitled, "These Thirteen Intersections Are Among the Deadliest in the Kansas City Area," listed two intersections in independents. The first was two ninety-one at Twenty-Third Street, and the second one was U. S. twenty-four Highway at Sterling Avenue. Now, I know this is a sensitive part of the puzzle for some folks in this case, but many cities began to experience a decline in their general fund revenues that were generated by municipal court. When you have twelve to one hundred and eighty-six percent cases not showing up for court for traffic violations, and in the general ordinance summonance cases has dropped as well, there was a significant decline in our general fund. We estimate, staff estimates, that that's one point five million dollars annually. These funds could be potentially used for public safety needs, street and infrastructure needs, and other important community services. And just as a side note, our domestic violence shelter here in Independence, even though this isn't something in my wheelhouse, state law allows us to collect up to four dollars per case for domestic violence shelter in our city or county. And just doing my, and I affectionately say this, my Fort Worth sage math, that comes out to almost eighty-five thousand dollars a year that our domestic violence shelter is missing out on. So have there been efforts to change Senate Bill Five? The city of Independence has placed reinstating the authority of judges to have discretion to suspend interstate driver's licenses for failing to appear in municipal court for minor traffic violations as a legislative priority since two thousand and seventeen. We have not asked for any increases in the amount of fines, or to institute new fines or fees, or to change many of the reforms that were enacted. But we have been trying to modify the unintended consequences of Senate Bill Five, and we have worked on this issue with our government consultants in the following cities: Belton, Columbia, Pleasant Valley, Peculiar, Raytown, Raymore, Springfield, and St. Joseph. Numerous bills have been introduced since two thousand and seventeen to address the unintended consequence. I'm not going to give you a bill history and go through all of them, but I'll speak to three very briefly tonight. In two thousand and eighteen, Senate Bill Five fifty-three was sponsored by Senator Bob Dixon of Springfield, and the city of Independence testified at the Senate Committee Hearing in favor of the bill, and it was voted at a Senate Committee Hearing, and everybody told us, "Great job on a glide path." You're smiling, Mayor. I think you know the rest of the story. But at the last minute, several senators who previously indicated to us their support, Moraxi voted no on the third read on the Senate floor by a vote of thirteen to seventeen, and Mayor Rowan can tell you how unusual that is for Senate leadership, or even House leadership, to bring up a bill and for it to fail. So that was kind of an interesting development for us in two thousand and eighteen. In two thousand and nineteen, we were told we didn't have any chance at all. Senate Bill One Forty-seven was passed by the General Assembly that would have reinstated the authority of municipal court judges to suspend interstate driver's licenses for failure to appear in municipal court, beginning as a second offense. There was a little caveat to that, because initially, Senate Bill Five had a provision that said that municipalities can only collect twenty percent, no more than twenty percent of their general fund for municipal court. Well, because of the issues in eastern Missouri that I've referenced, the bill said that St. Louis City and St. Louis County can only collect twelve point five percent. So we got kind of creative working with other allies, said, "Well, if the problem's in St. Louis City and St. Louis County, then they shouldn't have the ability to suspend interstate driver's licenses." So that was kind of the trade-off in that bill. But Governor Parson vetoed the bill because he cited a Supreme Court decision that, earlier about that bill, that throughout the twelve point five percent limit for St. Louis City and St. Louis County, the Missouri Supreme Court found it to be, quote, "A special law without substantial justification and unconstitutional under Missouri Constitution Article Three, Section forty, Subsection thirty." In two thousand and twenty-one, another bill, Senate Bill Forty-six, was passed by the Missouri Senate that would have done something very similar. And in the House of Representatives, as it happens in the legislative process, people kind of didn't like certain parts of the bill, and amendments get offered, and things get added, and things get dropped. And because it was so late in the session, and it was so convoluted at that point, it was May thirteenth, I believe, which anybody knows anything about the General Assembly, May thirteenth is awfully late in the year. And so, due to it being so late, the legislation stalled. During the past four legislative sessions, Representative Mike Hafner of Pleasant Hill has sponsored legislation that would have addressed this issue. He introduced House Bill Two Thousand and seven last year, and our police chief, Adam Dustman, traveled to Jefferson City, and he testified and supported this bill in front of the House Local Government Committee. And due to his persuasiveness, the very next day, it was voted off committee by a vote of eleven to one. And as sometimes happens in the legislature, the bill was referred to the Rules of Administrative Oversight Committee, and it sat there for the rest of the session. Representative Hafner, our friend, has filed House Bill Two Fifty-two this year. He prefilled it in December that addresses this issue. And as I checked before I came down tonight, it was second read on January fifth, and has not been referred to committee, which, as the mayor can tell you, that's not a very good sign for that bill at all. I am not aware of any Senate bills that have been filed to deal with this issue, so I would say, just based on my knowledge of legislature, I'm not sure it's going anywhere this year, but I do think that this is something we should continue to look at. We probably need to continue to make our case. We also probably need to say, we really want this to be at a judge's discretion. We want it to be for the second offense, because everybody forgets, everybody makes a mistake, people move. I've moved recently. It's been a lot of fun dealing with the male, is it here, is it there? Sometimes people oversleep, sometimes people have overwhelming life obligations, and so we want a system that's fair. So I don't know that we're going to get a lot of traction this year, but I do think this is something that we should continue to look at in future years due to all of the things that I have mentioned. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Mayfield? Proceed.
I'm not sure if this is a question for you or for others, but just so that I make sure I understand. So if someone gets a ticket for reckless driving, so a moving violation, they're going a hundred miles an hour in a sixty-five mile-an-hour zone, we cannot suspend their license for reckless driving.
That is not a minor traffic violation.
Okay.
If you're speeding over nineteen miles per hour, that is not a minor traffic violation. If you're doing something in a construction or school zone, that is not a minor traffic violation. So that would not apply in this case.
Thank you for that clarification. And the second question is, as I was knocking doors, people complained about tags, out-of-date tags, that they hadn't gone through and gotten an official license plate. I would imagine that that has effects on this as well.
It does. It has an impact on the state, obviously, because they collect a significant amount of revenue. My understanding that they have begun the process of having dealerships, working with the State Department of Revenue, to have a database where they can all talk together. I actually, for a period of time in my life, I actually worked at the Department of Motor Vehicles, and one of the complaints I heard a great deal was, wow, I moved here from Kansas, and they were so much easier to deal with in the state of Missouri than all of you folks are. And part of the problem for that is, is the state of Kansas, the state, the counties, the cities are all in one database, and Missouri, it's turf war, it's one hundred and fourteen counties, the city of St. Louis, the state. They are working on that. There's been legislation, I believe, that has been passed to sort of create that database. And in typical Missouri fashion, I can say that as a native, they think it's going to take four to five years to correct that, where you actually can get tags, real tags, not the fake paper ones. I know that's a complaint I get often in my role, and it's a difficult situation. We hope that there's a fix on the horizon. It's not probably a fix today. And again, with our limited resources, do we chase after someone with a paper tag, being thirty-plus officers short, or do we focus on other things? Life's unfortunately a series of trade-offs, and that's kind of what happens.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So I just want to say, it's more of a comment than anything. So I understand why this was done. You know, there was some stuff going on in Ferguson and elsewhere that, you know, was kind of shady. But they cast a wide net over, you know, the entire state. And, you know, I definitely want to see, you know, get somebody driving through our city, and they're speeding, and they never come back, you know? You know, it's very hard to get them into court, you know, to take care of their stuff, and especially without being, without the ability to suspend their driver's license. It makes it even more difficult. So I would really like to see us keep pursuing a remedy on this and, you know, try to at least get some of it changed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Nope, I agree completely, and you did a great job summarizing the challenges of Jefferson City, once they fix something to unfix it. And, yeah, it's been a quagmire ever since they've done it. And one of the biggest barriers is the main sponsor is now a U. S. Senator, so when he was A. G., nobody wanted to touch it because they didn't want to upset the A. G. when their position in the legislature. So it compounded with people in positions of power.
There are a lot of interesting allies on this bill that you don't normally see, which makes it a little more difficult and challenging as well.
Right.
But yes, all those things together, with the A. G. being his baby, and the political triangulation, if you will, has made it very difficult. And I just think this is something we're just going to continue to pursue. Mayor, you've probably heard this at your orientation, I heard it at mine, someone once told me, "You could have the greatest bill in the world, it can make the most sense and solve a lot of problems, it's going to take you at least five years to pass it."
That's so true. All right, thank you very much. Anyone else, other questions before we move on? Thank you, Mr. Mayfield. Well done. Okay. Next on the agenda is an update on the recreational marijuana.
Yes, again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the voters of Missouri have now amended the state constitution to legalize the use of recreational marijuana. That is going to have a reciprocal effect on a number of areas of our business here at the city. There's going to be quite a bit of ordinances coming forward to council over the next several weeks, dealing with that. So we wanted to get that on your radar, to start contemplating. Our city attorney, Jeremy Cover, is here to walk you through the various issues that staff have identified and give you an update on what's going to need to be amended as a result of that change in code, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As Mr. Walker stated, Amendment Three, which was approved by the voters in November, has legalized, to an extent, recreational marijuana in Missouri. Customers were able to start buying actually at licensed dispensaries as of February sixth, so it's something that is here, and we're going to start seeing more of. As you all know, there's a three percent sales tax that will be on the ballot for, in April, that if approved by the voters, would be a city sales tax on marijuana sales. Legalization affects a number of different areas for the city, including the criminal code, community development, and U. D. O. and H. R. policies. So the goal tonight is just to give you a high-level preview of coming attractions of some of the issues you're going to be seeing in bills and ordinances that'll be coming your way over the next month and so. Criminal code recommendations. Some of these are in Chapter eleven, smoking in public places and places of employment. This would raise the maximum fine to the amount set by Amendment Three. Chapter twelve, Article Two, controlled substances, we're looking at changing and updating definitions, changing and updating what it means to possess controlled substances. As you might imagine, current definitions and language don't meet the current realities. Changing updates to possession of drug paraphernalia, and changing updates to manufacture and deliver of drug paraphernalia. So all of these are taking into effect the changes from recreational marijuana. It also is giving us an additional opportunity to make sure that the language works as applies to medicinal marijuana, which was previously approved. We're also looking at Chapter eighteen, Article ten. This would amount to criminalizing driving under the influence of marijuana. So again, this is, marijuana has sort of shifted to where it's now, you know, closer to being regulated like alcohol is. So it's, again, you can have it in certain situations, you can buy it, you can consume it, but it is not meaning you can just do whatever you want within any time you want. Bills to consider, these recommendations will have their first reading before you all on March sixth, so that'll be in that packet, and that's the first time you're going to see the criminal code sections that we're putting forward. Next is community development recommendations. So there's going to be some in Chapter five pertaining to business licenses. Obviously, we weren't, we didn't have business licenses for, at least for recreational marijuana facilities previously, because they didn't exist. So we're adding new definitions there, new categories, revising the process as it relates to marijuana facilities, so that it's consistent with Amendment Three, and we're also removing certain prohibitions on licenses, which we can no longer have because they are inconsistent with Amendment Three. We'll also be looking at the U. D. O. We're going to be adding definitions to account for new categories of marijuana facilities, new marijuana facilities in commercial districts, types of marijuana facilities, and also to security requirements. So all of this is what came out of Amendment Three, and so we're going to be putting forward those recommendations. Those are going to go to the Planning Commission on February twenty-eighth, so then, depending on what happens there, you all will, you know, see it shortly thereafter. All recommendations will be presented to council for consideration following the Planning Commission review. So technically, only the U. D. O. recommendations are going to the Planning Commission. That's part of the normal process. But we're going to keep all of the community development recommendations together, kind of in one package. So you're not going to see even the ones that business licenses, and if there's anything else we come up with between now and then, even though, then they're not going to Planning Commission, we're going to keep all those together. And so those will all be coming to you as one packet after they've gone to the Planning Next and last category we have is H. R. recommendations. So these would be recommended changes to the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. That is what, you know, the policy that governs all the city employees. It would remove zero tolerance policy for marijuana that's currently there. It would, or the idea behind that is that, again, as we, you know, transition to a higher tolerance of marijuana, it wouldn't necessarily be zero tolerance for all positions, which is what it is right now. The proposed changes would seek to allow some use of marijuana, both medical and recreational, if the position allows for it. The H. R., yes?
Just to clarify, that doesn't mean while they're at work.
No, it means if they test for it. Again, you know, if you think of it like alcohol, you can't drink on the job, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you couldn't have, you know, you couldn't have alcohol if we were testing for it, you couldn't have alcohol in your system. So that's the difference. It is not allow for use on the job or while working, it's just a matter of if you're tested zero tolerance, or changing from zero tolerance. The proposed revisions would expand upon the definition of illegal drug to allow for the legal use of marijuana under Missouri law for non-D. O. T. regulated and non-safety-sensitive positions. The recommendations will also define safety-sensitive position and safety-sensitive function to further carve out those specific functions which would continue to have zero tolerance. So this is going to vary, at least as we're proposing it, as staff would vary based on the types of positions that you're talking about. It would expand upon the meaning of impairment and authorizes H. R. and train supervisors to identify impaired employees and take necessary action. So staff's recommendations, two changes to the Personnel Policies and Procedures will be going to the Personnel Board on March tenth, that's the normal process that takes, and then it would be up to what you all see will be the recommended changes coming from the Personnel Board, once they're done with it. So obviously, this is new territory for all of us, so it's likely we're going to make, you know, changes as we go here, and there's going to be additional changes later as we start to actually experience this in practice and start to figure things out. So we're, you know, this is not a, okay, one-and-done solution. It's, here's what we know we need to, we think we should fix right now in order to put us on the right path. So does anyone have any questions?
Please proceed.
The good news is Missouri is sometimes the make-me state, along with being the show-me state, and so we have the privilege of other people doing this before we have. So we've got a lot of opportunities to learn. Where else have we looked for other municipalities, Colorado, California, et cetera, who have been approaching this before Missouri gets to it?
Yeah, so I think mostly we have looked to Colorado, and that's been both, you know, we've been able to see things that seem to have worked well for them and things that have not worked so well for them. So we've tried to take that into account, but, you know, again, as we're going through, you know, this is just the initial preview for you all, as we're going through this process with, you know, with you all and the other bodies, you know, we expect and would anticipate that there's going to be feedback and suggestions and recommendations that are going to, you know, possibly, you know, tweak some of this language. And so if there's other ideas or paths out there that we haven't considered, or that, you know, you all want to consider, then we're going to look at that, too.
Anything? Good. Anyone else, other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So with the increase of marijuana sales, that's obviously going to, more drivers are probably going to be driving impaired, so I don't, Jeremy, I don't know if you can answer this question, but are we, are we training more of our police officers to be drug recognition experts, to, you know, kind of counteract to that?
I am not in a position to answer that question.
And if the council will be okay, I'll ask the chief to come up and give a quick tutorial on what we're doing to adapt our business practice.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Adam Dustman, Chief of Police. Councilman Stewart, yes, we are expanding our D. R. E. program, which is also something that we that we will need to expand even further. Currently, we have two DREs certified within our traffic safety unit that perform those functions, but also one that is already scheduled to be a DRE instructor, which will allow us to expand here locally. The other complication that we have had to overcome is with our police canines, and so, as you can imagine, canines that are trained and certified in the detection of the odor of marijuana are not scent discriminating to be able to, they don't lift their left paw if it's methamphetamine, and their right paw if it's cocaine, and wag their tail if it's marijuana. So we are in the process of only using our two remaining canines that are certified in marijuana detection for article searches, which would be objects of any kind, as well as individual searches, not doing drug detections, not doing perimeter searches of vehicles. We do have two canines currently in service that are, that were not trained. In anticipation of Amendment Three, they were not trained in marijuana, so they are fine for article, or for drug detection searches in vehicles and premises. And then we are in the process of replacing those two through attrition and, as well as an additional canine that will retire the one, and that way we'll be back to full strength for non-marijuana-certified canines.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Chief, I appreciate that. Any other discussion on this, Mr. City Manager?
As the city councillor noted, you'll see the dates of when these items are coming forward. They're in process now, and we'll be seeking council action on those very soon.
Okay, very good. And that brings us to the 2023 City Action Plan, and so I think you're going to guide us on that, if I'm correct.
I am giving one moment. Okay, again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Zach Walker, the city manager. And tonight, it's my pleasure to speak to you on the Independence Action Plan for the city council. Just a little bit on what the action plan is. This will serve as the council's business plan, your Rosetta Stone, if you will, about where we see the city going, really over the next two to five years. You may remember, this past fall, Joe Laber from Laber Municipal Law was here, spoke to you on council roles and responsibilities, and one of the things that he noted was that a primary responsibility of the city council is to set and clearly articulate strategic goals for this community based on the things you hear from your constituents, the recommendations from city staff, just really that input from the broader community at large. And our city charter even speaks to that in Section 1.2, which empowers and makes this group responsible for setting the policy and the vision for our community. The city, as far as I can tell, has had strategic plans as far back as 1994, 2002, 2014, and most recently in 2017, and again, 2022. This new plan that's being proposed for you, though, reflects this council's current priorities and will guide the policy decisions, the policy items that this group is focused on, your funding decisions. Again, really will serve as that foundational document for where the council wants to see things go. I do want to note, and I'm typically not one to get caught in semantics, but we as staff are intentionally recommending calling this action plan. In the past, this has been called a strategic plan, but I would propose to you that this group has strategized long enough, and the time for action is now, and having that mindset of action and acting is something we can all wrap our minds around. This, again, refers back to what I'm, this is a slide that was shared by Mr. Laber last fall. The pyramid here proposes that there are six levels of government, and at the highest level, Level Six, is that organizational survey. If I could borrow the analogy for a minute, and unlike Councilmember Steinmeier, I don't have a Navy background, but if I could borrow an analogy of a group on a ship, the council really serves as that group that's up in the crow's nest, looking out across the ocean, letting us know where we need to navigate and steer towards. By communicating that down and giving staff that direction, as shipmates on the deck, we can make sure that the ship goes where the council is wanting to see it go. So this action plan really is that hand-holding and the passing of the baton between council and staff. The council setting the policy, the staff knowing where the council wants to go and acting upon that vision. So the action plan, as you're going to see, really begins to implement and charts forward, of course, based on the vision that you're telling us as a group you want to set for this community. So I know most of you know this, but for the community's benefit, just how this all came together, back in October, I met with the leadership team, the directors of this city, and we brainstormed the things that we thought might be of importance. You know, again, as this body tries to get feedback from as many places as possible, we wanted to propose to you things that we thought might merit your consideration and your focus over that next two- to five-year period. That information was packaged and prepared for you. All seven of you completed a pre-strategic planning session survey. The group then met for a day-long session back on November 28th, in which you had a chance to discuss among yourselves the things of greatest importance to you and what you wanted to accomplish, what your visions, your hopes, your goals were. And then all of that was once more verified and summarized in the form of a post-meeting survey, in which you, again, affirm the things that were of importance to you and begin to assign some prioritization to those items. With those in mind, I then worked with my staff to identify the how, again, back on the ship deck. How are we going to steer the ship to the places you wanted to go? So as staff, we have identified 105 different action items to implement, the six items that you'll see here in a minute that you all have identified. Those are included in the action plan that shows up for council consideration, the item that was postponed last week and has now been rescheduled for February 20th. But again, those are more specifically the things that I've asked my staff, how will we accomplish the things the council wants to do? And that is the feedback that they have given me of how we can accomplish the things that you've asked for. So again, that is the marriage between the council policy vision and the staff carrying out the vision that you're setting for us. One of the things that I really liked that the council discussed at their retreat back on the 28th, a lot of organizations, public and private, both speak about a vision statement or a mission statement, and one of the things that was mentioned was a purpose statement. Why are we here? What is our purpose? What is it we're trying to get done? And I will read this for everybody's benefit. The purpose statement that this council worked on reads as follows. "Independence is a safe, inclusive community fostering civic engagement and creativity with a thriving and diversified economy, a strong and proud history, and a high quality of life as our community grows and adapts." So again, that discussion that day really focused on how do we move forward, keep up with the progress and the development happening in our region, in fact, leading that progress and development in our region, but also maintaining the things that provide us our unique identity, the things that make Independence feel like Independence. And from that purpose statement came six core areas of focus, or, again, what the council called what was our purpose, what are we trying to get done. Over the next two to five years, if we are successful, then we will be able to say affirmatively that Independence is an engaged community, an innovative economy, a safe and welcoming community, a well-planned city, a financially sustainable organization, and a high-performance organization. And I'm briefly going to speak about each of those in a little more detail now. An engaged community. The council wants to make sure that we are a community that fosters a culture and of engagement and civic leadership based on innovation and best practices involving community members of all backgrounds and perspectives. There were four objectives identified associated with that. Outreach, meaning to figure out how we deliver information to the community and our partners. Community engagement, broadening and deepening our engagement of the community, to invite input from all aspects of our community and our stakeholders, collaborating with our public agencies, recognizing that our success will be dependent upon our neighboring jurisdictions, entities like Jackson County, other public entities like that, and then business and institutional partnerships, whether they be business groups or nonprofit entities that are, working relationships will help drive and define our success. All of these things can't be accomplished by City Hall, they will require the partnership and the buy-in of many different outside partners. The next area of purpose was an innovative economy. The council wanted to define that we grow a diversified and innovative economy, leveraging our community amenities, our skilled and creative people, and educational resources to generate economic opportunities. This purpose area involves business growth, making support, that we provide support for business retention and growth, that we make infrastructure investments, knowing that those infrastructure investments are key to both economic development and redevelopment, and focusing on workforce development to ensure that our residents have the skills that today's employers are looking for to meet their employment needs. Next area was a self, pardon me, a safe and welcoming community. The council wanted to ensure that we embrace a safe, healthy, welcoming, and inclusive community. Again, a focus here on public safety by supporting public safety programming, emergency preparedness, public safety facilities, and leadership. Focusing on health and safety, working with our partners to improve public awareness, public education, and coordination surrounding areas such as public health, animal welfare, emergency services, criminal justice, and other social service needs. And finally, in this area, being a friendly community to ensure that Independence continues to welcome diversity through our policies, through public awareness, and through community Our fourth area was being a well-planned city. The council wanted to ensure that we consistently improve our community's appearance and quality of life as it grows and changes, honoring our unique history and sense of place as we plan for a livable, affordable, and more connected city. In this area, the council specifically wanted to focus on things like improving our public infrastructure and our condition of public facilities, making sure that we have a high-quality urban approach to support quality planning, ranging from things like building design to neighborhood layout, stabilizing and revitalizing neighborhoods, providing for vibrant commercial districts and neighborhood centers, and addressing our housing and transportation choices for all individuals and families in our community. The next area was focusing on being a financially sustainable organization, which I would argue all other items are highly dependent on this area, because if our financial foundation isn't strong, it makes it difficult to provide and address for those other services and needs. In this area, the council wanted to ensure that we're creating long-term financial stability using equitable and sustainable sources of funding for city services and making sure we deliver those in a lean and efficient manner. This area includes things such as controlling our long-term financial costs to ensure our finances are stable and sustainable, capturing sustainable sources of funding by obtaining permanent viable funding for city services, and making sure that we have a high degree of financial planning and reporting, and ensuring our policies, procedures, and systems ensure transparent and efficient financial information for the governing body and the Final area was ensuring that this is a high-performing organization, and I want to make sure I make clear on this one before I go into it, that the discussion from the council was really a communication to me as the manager to make sure that we recruit, we retain, and we train employees and create a culture of excellence around here to ensure the delivery of services, again, in a very productive, transparent, ethical manner. This was not necessarily directing matters of personnel, which would, of course, fall outside of the council's jurisdiction, but communicating the type of culture and the type of employee the council expects us to provide our public services to the community. So in this area, the council wants to ensure that this organization operates as an ethical, high-performance organization, anticipating future needs, utilizing best practices, and striving for continuous improvement. Specifically, the council wanted to ensure that we have a values-driven culture that reinforces ethical behavior, exercises transparency, and maintains the community's trust. We want to focus on employee excellence by recruiting, retaining, and valuing a diverse, well-trained, qualified, and motivated team. We want to focus on best practices, creativity, and foresight to ensure that we innovate and constantly anticipate new directions and changes relevant to the governance of the city. And finally, the council wants to ensure that we are utilizing performance metrics to have data-driven decision-making and monitor, track, and improve the planning and delivery of city programs and services. So again, this item will appear on the council agenda next Monday night for your consideration and approval. Thereafter, my team and I will use this to help develop the budget for submission and consideration in May, and use it to develop the items for recommendation that will appear on your council agenda, your study sessions, really serve as that action plan for the next two-to-five-year period. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will conclude and be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. Walker, the original agenda item that you included last week had our six points that were our sort of high-level principles, and some really detailed points under each. I had got some feedback from citizens that were concerned that if we adopted such detailed points, that we would be invading your province as city manager, that we would be making decisions for you or doing your job for you. Can you explain that a bit?
Yes, so that refers back to some of the earlier remarks that I made this evening about illustrating for the community that unity, that marriage, if you will, between council policy, those six purpose areas that the council's focusing on, and then those 105 action items that city staff intend to carry forward for your consideration, of course, but to implement and drive those. So those 105 were spread out across the six purpose areas, but they were intended to illustrate in a very transparent way the staff strategy for making sure that those purpose areas come to life, that we breathe life into those. I don't see it as feasible to accomplish those all in one year, which is why we're kind of looking at this as a two-to-five-year plan. I know the cover says 2023, but, you know, really, that's something we intend to carry forward year to year over the next several years. We can amend that in any way that makes it clear to the community that, you know, the council is not in an area that they shouldn't be, but I really wanted to stress for everybody, the community we serve and use, the governing body, that we've got that clear lines of communication and that coordination between the council with the policies that they are setting and the staff with the ways in which we'll work to carry out your vision.
Thank you very much. And just for clarity's sake, the 105 points, you drafted those.
So after the council concluded your initial day-long strategic planning session, we sort of had a pretty good survey of where the council wanted to focus. I solicited feedback, provided a der- I solicited feedback, provided a directive to my leadership team to tell me, what are the things you can do that you would recommend we do to carry out these areas? Each department director then submitted to me those core deliverables, and they are reflective in that document. Those were not created by council. The council created those six, these, the purpose statements, those six areas. That's where the councils' work concluded.
Wonderful. I just, I very much appreciate that clarification, and I enjoy that you decided to marry the, our high-level priorities with staffs and your director level, very detailed points to get there. I thought that was a creative way to do it. My colleagues may have some other ideas about that, but I appreciate seeing that sort of collaborative effort. So regardless of how it ends up looking on paper, I definitely appreciate the combination. Thank you.
And I flipped back to this slide of a high-performance organization intentionally. The last strategic planning effort that the Independent City Council engaged in, many of you are familiar with it as known as Independence for All. One of the things we learned about that process was it really stopped with the council's high-level policy, core focus areas, if you will, and there wasn't that connectivity to city staff. And even where there was some, there were a lot of departments that didn't see themselves reflected in that plan. So for example, on this area of high-performing organization, a lot of our internal services departments, human resources, finance, technology services, they didn't see themselves in that plan, but they're a core part of what we do in this organization. So the strategies you see listed are very personnel-driven, but these, again, are the things that will happen behind the scenes to make certain that you, as a council, can communicate to your constituencies that, yes, this is a very transparent, ethical, innovative, high-performing organization.
Mr. Mayor. Please proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, I, I, I know we're a council-manager government, and so you're giving yourself 105 total action items to implement. We only have six. So in my, in my world, I've told you this, that it's important that this council and all councils set their city manager in place to succeed. And so that's our role for you, is because when you're successful, our city's successful, and we realize that. So, and I, I read through them, and you have, you have given us a lot to consider and think about. And as, and as a council, I think we owe it to you to have some of those measurables in place, some timelines. We understand what you want to do, and we need to talk more about how we want to get there and how we measure our success, watermarks. And so my question is, you know, how often do we want to look at the progress? You're giving us 24 to 60 months. That's a long time. And so I just want to know, how do we better serve you as a council to say, you know, how do we, how often should we meet with you to look at the measurables? How, and so that if something's not working, whether it's on our side or your side, that we have the ability to discuss it and bring the support to you to make your staff happy in what they're doing and successful in what they're doing. That doesn't mean it's not going to be hard at times, but how often do you think, or is that something you want to think about and look at? And then how do we record the progress or the lack of progress? How, in other words, how are we learning from our, our action steps in the roadmap as we move forward? So establishing some timelines, I would like to, and you don't have to answer it. It's just something we can talk about.
Oh, but I want to answer.
Okay.
And you, you, nobody, I didn't ask councilmember Steinmeier to ask this. I'm so excited. You've given me an opening here with staff. I've been working behind the scenes for the last several months with them on something that internally we've been calling back to basics. These six items, these are core, basic, fundamental principles of any highly reputable, desirable community, okay? And so we've been talking about, how do we start to track and measure? Are we a safe, welcoming community? Are we a well-planned city? How can we start to assign some very specific measurables? What I would propose and submit to this council is no less than quarterly, we come in and present to you on these defined performance metrics and state, you know, these are illustrative only, okay? But how quickly are we responding to calls for service? What is our workload in community development looking like? So that you can get a sense of, is this a resource problem? Have we not assigned enough resources to get the outcome that we want? Or is this a performance issue that we need to communicate with the manager, to communicate with staff? What do we need to do to get that performance up? So this is something I'm very passionate about, very excited about, and something I'd love to continue working with you guys to start. You know, what I see is as we adopt this budget in June, then starting to have at least those quarterly performance metric presentations to this governing body so you can see how well we are or are not performing and make those adjustments throughout the year.
I like that. And then also, is there going to be an opportunity for some city input from our citizens as well, you know? Because we throw around the word, our words, inclusive, diverse. We know what the political definitions are, but there's a real-world life out here happening that sometimes we miss. And I would love to see us allow the voice and the input of communities within our community that feel like they're not being heard or that we're not recognizing. Is there going to be an opportunity for us to understand what, what, what that diversity and inclusiveness looks like outside of City Hall?
I think there has to be, okay? And you and I have talked about these numbers. I know this isn't new information for you, but for others maybe listening tonight, our population as a community in between the last two census, 2010 to 2020, our population went up 6,000. That's good. Our number of people identifying themselves as white went down 10,000, which means our growth came from people who are historically classified as a minority in this community. You know, we need to be thinking about, how are we presenting our information? In what language are we presenting it? What are the barriers to make somebody feeling comfortable coming in a government building to a council meeting or engaging with a government official? How do we get outside of this building and into neighborhoods and into homeowners associations or civic community centers, whatever they may be? Absolutely, we need to be working on that and having that discussion and dialogue. I'll tell you just one very small way we're doing that right now, and it's a step, right? It's not success, but this is the second year that we've been doing a pre-budget development survey online, asking our residents, you know, again, there's barriers there. You have to have internet access to do this, so I don't recognize that this is fail-proof in any way. But last I heard, an update, we had over 300 responses to that survey, and what was exciting about it was beyond just doing the open-ended, people are filling out the narrative, giving us their feedback about things other than the static questions, you know, A, B, C, or D. But that's a start. We've got to figure out the ways that people feel safe and comfortable engaging with us and figuring out what are those barriers to feeling safe to engaging with us and then knocking those down so everyone, being inclusive, feels safe to participate with us. Point well taken.
Okay, thank you. That made me think of something real quick. How are we pushing that survey out?
Through social media, so through the city's Facebook page, any other ways?
Is there any way we could stick a piece of paper in the people that get paper utility bills?
Let me see, let me, let me work on it and see what we can do.
Even a slip or something?
Yeah, let me see what we can do with that.
I'd like, that's, that's, since we've never done that.
Snail mail, yeah.
Sure would be great to, you know, hit as many people as we could.
Let me see, yeah. I, and even for those that sign up to get their bill electronically, we can usually put some sort of a pop-up with their bill in there. So let me see what we can do. And I'll report back to the council on that.
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you. You know, we spent a day together, both getting to know each other and know each other's priorities and hearing a little bit from staff as well. And it's easy to adopt kind of those high-level overarching statements, but having some of the practicality underneath that from your team, I think, is another expression of transparency for what the community can expect from us. And I really second councilmember Steinmeier's comment about check-ins so that we have our own scorecard because we're as responsible for this strategic plan as your thousand employees are. I'm sure that you have a plan for, once this is adopted, being sure that everybody in that group has buy-in and responsibility and feels their own ownership of those areas. And I look forward to hearing probably offline, you know, how people are feeling that they're connected to the thing that they're responsible for. And then coming back to, you know, a budget is a statement of values. It isn't just a math experience. So being able to take the values of citizens into account as we begin our budgeting process. Budgets are hard. There's always more need than there are money to fulfill those, so I appreciate you reaching out. 300 doesn't seem like a lot for 123,000 people, but if that represents an entire household's worth of input, there's probably more that you're getting from that. Do you have a goal for the number of citizens that you're hoping will give you feedback on your budget?
We did not set a quantitative goal. I will tell you from a qualitative standpoint, this is the second year we've done it in our experience with other programs. It kind of takes a few years to get some buy-ins, so this number is leaps ahead of last year's, and I'm hoping to see that this becomes something that people recognize as part of an annual tradition, that they, it's time for me to provide my feedback for the city if I want to ensure that my voice was heard in the budgetary process. I did want to mention, and I appreciate you making the comment, staff are already taking to this very well. I had a director the other day already quoting, you know, oh, I got to get to work on 5.1.0C or whatever. So it's good to see that they see themselves in this. They thrive on accountability and predictability of outcomes, so knowing where the council stands and what they want to get done is extremely helpful for me in my role then to communicate that with them and them to produce forward. So again, this marriage is extremely important to our collective success.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
Just want to say that I appreciate the process we went through to get to this point in time and how you have, you know, taken it to the next level by adding the action items. I think a comment regarding the action items, number, first comment maybe about that is that, you know, 105 is a lot of items, and, you know, I think it's important to understand that, you know, it'll take time to do that. It's also important to understand that the 105 items are not, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not all-inclusive to everything we do in the city. And so, you know, those are, it's just important to that, that the citizens understand that these are, you know, items that staff has raised to accomplish the goals that the council has kind of lifted forward. Is that be accurate?
That is absolutely accurate, and I'm glad you made that point, councilmember. This is not an all-inclusive list. There are still routine business items that will have to come forward to the council. There are issues that will come up throughout the course of any fiscal year that are going to have to be addressed or added to. But as you say, this gives us a good baseline and a good starting point to help hold staff accountable, to help hold yourselves accountable as that governing body. It's not going to be the end of time on all of these things. Some of these are not just a checklist that we get done and move on. They're a continuous process, you know, establishing good working relationships with community partners. That work is never done. That carries on beyond all of us. But I appreciate the point you've made that this is not something that will only define, you know, our work for the next year or five years even.
The other comment is I appreciate the other comments from councilmembers relative to, you know, the reporting back process and, you know, it's going to be really important, I think, at least for me, to have some sort of a report card to see, and I'm glad you're planning to bring that forward to us on a quarterly basis. And, you know, it'll likely be, I'm hoping it'll be some sort of a thing so we can see the progress as time goes along. And, you know, you may, you may have things, well, we need to add this, you know, we need to take away this, and, but, you know, it can be kind of a living and breathing document, hopefully, in that respect. But I really think it's really important to be able to, you know, watch and see how that evolves and how the pieces of the puzzles come together. And so I appreciate the comments about that. Relative to the cover sheet that has been pretty much on everything for Independence for All, you know, that's going to probably need to go away in respect. But I am hopeful that something can be, you know, developed that is, you know, shows what these focuses are and what it's involved in, that that can be kind of developed in such a way that it'll be at the forefront of our minds in, you know, whether it's on the front of every, you know, agenda item or on the wall like that or whatever. I'm not sure that, we'll leave that up to you, obviously, but I do think it's important to have it in front of us on a regular basis and see it, so.
Point well taken on that, and that is something our communications manager has assembled, a great team in the communications division, great graphic designing skills, great communication skills, and we'll get to work on creating something akin to what we had with Independence for All to communicate as a reminder to ourselves and to those we're serving what it is we're trying to accomplish.
I appreciate knowing that. I think that's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. And I just want to say thank you for the work that you've done on this. You got us all together and said, hey, it's a priority, and I appreciate the prodding that you did so to get us to this point. I appreciate all of my colleagues working on this to collaborate on it. And I think we should talk about the, you know, what type of style of meeting we should have in the three months going forward. Please proceed.
So is it, would it be inappropriate to go ahead and calendar something in June for our first follow-up? Is that something you would be agreeable to?
I'd be agreeable to that. I want to talk about the framework.
And that's, and if we need to do that as well in that time or see how that's coming along.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I don't want it to, we often get busy and our agendas get full.
Great point.
If we have a June something.
Right.
Then I'm not, I'm not so much concerned as to an in-depth or if that's what you want to do, but let's at least calendar.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great discussion. I just, I'll be very honest with you. I prefer not to do that review in this process. I like to do it like we did before, where we get around a table, we can have the documentation in front of us and do that. I like that format. So if you're, if everyone's, you know, amenable to that format, because I thought that was a very robust discussion, it's still a public meeting, it's still open to the public, but it allows us to be in a little bit different format.
However, however we see fit to do it, just, I just don't want it to.
No, I agree.
Get lost in the.
And we could do it on, in June, on that third, that third Monday that we would typically, or I guess it'd be the fourth Monday, wouldn't it? Excuse me. So to do that on the fourth Monday and have that, it's just the topic. I'm happy to put that on the calendar now and just say, discuss it, and then, you know, solidify the format. But the format concerns me significantly on, so that we're really, I thought that day it really helped us become a collaborative body, and I want to continue that process. Councilmember?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, this is something under consideration for some.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, this is something under consideration for some time between you and I and then Mr. Councilmember Steinmeier and several of us, and Mr. Walker. Many, many cities utilize sort of a work session that's a different format than this, and we'll, I'll circulate some ideas on that. Maybe we can put a little format together and agree on something and give it a shot. Might be time to crank that up going forward. Use it once in a while.
Yep. Perfect. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you all.
Mr. City Manager, thank you very much for your time on that. We also have staff reports, boards of commissions.
Thank you. We have a few boards and commissions where we're looking for reappointment and appointment. First is Advisory Board of Health. There's recommendation being made to reappoint John Rudy, Darrell Nelson, and Larry Legler. If there's no objections, this resolution is on the agenda for 2/20.
And are we meeting on 2/20 or are we meeting on 2/21?
We are meeting on 2/20. President's Day is no longer official city holiday except for some of our collective bargaining groups that have that as a holiday in their collective bargaining agreement. So for the rest of us, we are still a open for business.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is Parks Commission. Councilmember Hobart is recommending appointing Dennis Tharp. If there's no objections, this is also on the 2/20 agenda.
Thank you.
And Jackson County Board of Equalization, Ron Brew, as an alternate member, has been recommended. If there's no objections, this is also on the 2/20 agenda.
And that's an important one because that sometimes gets some interesting perspectives for that group. So all the appointments we make with the county, that's probably one of the most important. Okay?
I would like to add for the Jackson County Board of Equalization, we just found out this past week that our regular member also no longer can serve, so if the council has any recommendations for that board, if he could send some people my way, we can get them on a board report coming up, because I'm sure the election, the Board of Equalization will be asking us for a full-time member. And then finally, there's some additional discussion on boards for the Innovation Center Advisory Board and the Independence Economic Development Partnership that I will throw to the city manager.
The new Economic Development Partnership that was established by council a few months ago, in addition to staff representation, that board has two spots by contract with the new entity allocated to members of the city council. So the council would need to formally appoint two individuals to serve on that. I know there's a strategic planning session coming up next week that we have some of our carryover from the Economic Development Council helping to fulfill that, but we should officially affirm that, those two individuals that will permanently serve on that, just for good business practice.
Anything else, sir?
Just that I'm interested in serving on that.
Okay. You'd be interested in serving on that, so. And I see Becky has duly noted that, so. Very good. Any other comments before we wrap up? Let's go to other discussion topics then.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I've got a comment from Mr. Walker, if that's all right.
Sure.
Mr. Walker.
Sir.
The council's familiar with the, and this is totally different topic, the arrow derivative turbine proposal that's been made by IPL. We are sort of interested in a more comprehensive plan and would appreciate it if you would work with Mr. Nail and his staff on something along those lines, if that's acceptable.
It's acceptable, and it's noted in the action plan that will be before the council next Monday night, so it is good to go ahead and get a jumpstart on that, and we're happy to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I should have asked this question earlier in the marijuana update.
Well, we've already, that agenda item's done. I'm teasing you. Go right ahead, my friend.
Mr. City Manager, I believe there was something in that amendment that said, like, people have had a city conviction or could go back and ask for that to be gotten rid of. How is the city addressing that?
Jeremy, can you handle that? Thank you. Sorry. Got the prosecutor, got too many lawyers here.
Yeah, thank you, Jeremy Coburn, City Councilor. So the amendment actually, it doesn't apply to convictions in municipal court. So to the extent that it was, you know, an IPD action that resulted in a state case, it does apply to that, but that's outside of our jurisdiction because it's the state courts that are handling it. So currently, that's not to say it couldn't change at some point, but currently, the way the language is written doesn't apply to municipal court convictions. So at this point, that's not something that we're actively addressing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And I hope councilmember, we're still good. I was just teasing a tad. Very good. Anyone else before we wrap up? With that, we'll call this meeting adjourned.